We're calling the meeting to order. We have a member attending room. And as Catherine is going to lead through a script that we need to relay.
Great, thank you, Mayor, Council. Yes, we have Councilmember. From location France, I will butcher. De Joux de Pomme in Montpellier. Councilmember is participating by Zoom webinar and in accordance with the Brown Act, the teleconference location has been noted on the. I also wanted to note for the record that we have a quorum of councilor present here person. Alright, so now I'm going to run through some questions with Councilmember Flynn to confirm that everything is working. Councilmember Flynn, can you hear me okay?
I can, but I would encourage everyone to speak very clearly into the mic and to speak slowly because it sounds like there may be a small lag occasionally.
Okay, good to know, thank you. Do you have a copy of the agenda for tonight's?
I do.
Have you posted the agenda at your location?
I have.
And is your location reasonably accessible to the?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great, thank you. And is there any member of the public there with you now?
No, there isn't. 4:00 AM.
Yes. Noted. Alright, so. We've all been able to hear you okay and I would. And with that, I would ask the clerk to proceed with roll call. Councilmember Flynn?
Present.
Councilmember Huffty?
Present.
Councilmember Walter?
Present.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Present.
Mayor Hasko?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, and Catherine, I think you have a statement regarding the closed.
Yes, thank you. The council met in closed session earlier. Us two items, a public employee regarding public employee government code section 54957 regarding town manager recruitment providing direction to its labor negotiator. Nothing to report out at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do not have any proclamations.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just have a few items. For one, ours summer concert series begins July 10th. It's a Thursday night, so it's tied in with the farmer's market. 5:30 and we have a legendary performer, Chris Kane, somebody you may know as one of the top blues. He'll be featured here. So that'll be our first one. The one we want's coming. But since this one's now, that's what it is. Secondly. There is no council meeting by 9th. Next council meeting will be July 20th. So before we meet again, there will be July 4th. And I want to really encourage people to go to professionally run fireworks exhibitions and not do any in their homes, not do any in their yards, not do anything will catch fire here in this town. So I know hardly anybody's listening, but I'm going to put it there in case they watch the video. Don't be stupid about doing fireworks. Go to a show. That's all I have right now. The rest, we'll get on to the rest of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Alright, now we'll move to oral communications where we have an opportunity public to comment and. On an agenda for this evening. So there are no hands raised in the schoolhouse at this point and online. We have Dave Cardinal first.
Hi, two quick comments. One, to echo Mark's point, it isn't just a good idea not to have fireworks. It's a good way not to go to jail because they are really, really illegal. Again, maybe nobody's watching. Of more interest, there's a, the last three nights, there's been a skip out of the audio from the schoolhouse ranging from like one to four seconds. That might have been what Rebecca's hearing. It's weird. Obviously, whatever we can do is good and it's great that we have any Zoom at all. But I think that might be something worth looking into because I don't think that was happening before. But the last couple nights it's been happening. Thank you.
Dave, if I could ask you to repeat what you're saying happening. It faded out a little bit.
Okay, and maybe that's maybe mine's fading out too, but basically. We can hear perfectly and then there's a dropout for maybe one to four seconds. And then the audio comes back on. So it's not impossible to sort of sort out what's going on, but it's weird and it's happened more than once this week, not just this meeting. So I think that's, I don't know what it is, but I don't think it's me. So there you go.
Thank you. Okay, Rita Comas.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. Last week at the finance meeting, the town finance meeting. The finance director mentioned that there wasn't a hire for a town manager and starting in August. And so I hopefully some more can come out of that. But thank you for working so hard and we'll get, keep Mark for three months while that person starts. And so that's pretty exciting too. That will help with the transition and our, you know, all the work that's needs to be done in our beautiful town. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mark, would you like to clarify that we had a question rather than there? I want to clarify what was said because if you heard that there was a town hire, a town manager hire, we just had a closed session on an employment matter. There has not been that development.
Yeah, there won't be a town manager hire until by 23rd if we have.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Okay. Alright, I see no other hands. So at this point, I want to move on to the. On it. Missing minutes confirmations. And so I know some people have to recuse on part of this. And I don't, I do want to know if anyone pull an. Or recuse so we can figure out how to break up the consent and discussion if there needs to be.
I do.
Okay.
I would, yeah, I'd like to pull C, D, E and F because I would like to recuse.
Six, C and D, you said?
No, six, yes, six, C, D, E and F.
Okay, and I will come back and take public comment. I just want. What, what pieces of this are going to? I believe Craig, you have recused from H?
H.
Six H. Okay. If there's no other recusals, then I will open it up for. Consent agenda. I see no hands in the schoolhouse and online. There's Kristi Corley. Kristi, you're on mute. Okay, we're not hearing you, Chris, and your hand is up. Alright, I'm going to move on and if you are managing to connect back, we'll, we'll talk to you. Oh, here you go. Nope. You came off mute and then you back on mute. Alright, let's. Organize. So the items that aren't being segregated out, I'll call it. I heard six A, B, G and I are items that voted on as a package. And I'm, Kristi put her hand down, so I don't.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Flynn? Councilmember Flynn? Councilmember Huffty?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hasko?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. And in terms of. Six, C, D, E and F, Rebecca, you're.
You just cut out again.
Six, C, D, E and F, you are recusing yourself from, correct?
Yes, I would like to, assuming that there's three votes.
Okay. Does anybody else need to?
Can I just make one clarification? Not to get into the weeds, but I think the, the, there's either recu.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Which is perhaps a best practice and my understanding for Flynn being attended at the council meetings on those dates is abstained from, from those votes. Councilmember Taylor, Vice Mayor pulled six H, which is the tax assessment for islands. Because he lives in that district and then therefore has a legal reason to. Normally with those kinds of things, if they're on the regular. But for. That you can actually stay here and the council can take that up in a separate vote. But I did just want to make that clarification for the.
Okay. Helen, do you have a? Statement?
Because I was not at these meetings, I would personally, I would like tubs as well for.
Okay, okay. Alright, do we have a motion to a B, D and F out of the remaining council members?
So moved.
I second it.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Flynn?
So I abstained from C, D, E and F.
Yeah. Councilmember Huffty?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye, thank you.
Mayor Hasko?
Aye.
Motion carries three two.
Alright, and then for item six H. Can I have a motion for approving that one?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Huffty?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Recused.
Recused. Mayor Hasko?
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you. Alright, now we're going to go to the review of the proposed 2025-26 budget. And tonight, we're asking for adoption of resolution. Standard questions and discussions. So I'll turn it over to staff who can lead us through that.
So tonight's item is the view of the proposed operating capital budgets. There are three items or action items required of the council tonight. One is to adopt the fiscal year 2020. Assistant Town Manager Corey will be handling that presentation. And then the second item is to actually adopt the 2025 proposed operating capital budget. And then number three is to adopt the fiscal year 2025 fixed GAAN appropriation limit. So for the salary schedule, Corey?
Good evening, Council. So the staff are asking. It is required by CalPERS California law that the governing body, which would council, adopt said salary schedule. We currently have job descriptions on the left or job classification. Not every job classification current staff member, or is it in plan to fill every position? Most of these positions have been adopted, or actually all of these positions adopted by town council either current or prior years for the job classification. The town manager is the one title on the salary schedule. Does not need to match a specific number related to the salary schedule. And there are some ranges where you'll see hourly range and it says salary that. Are based on salary. They are not applicable for overtime. There are other positions where there is a top of range and bottom of range. Bottom for the. And those positions are hourly positions, so they would be able for time. We are currently reviewing some of those positions to see if they should receiving overtime, given their specific oversight and class. The town proposes a 3% cost of living in, in past years, the town council has adopted a practice approving a CPI based on the February 5 Bay Area. And that is a 2.7%. We are currently proposing a 3% cost of living for fiscal impact is about 55,000 across for the whole year and that has already been baked into current 2520.
These are the budgeted positions that are included. As you can see, the 15 and a half FTE in the town manager and planning and building director positions are currently filled in as in interims, but permanent positions in the fiscal year. And, and we'll go into a little bit more when we go into the budget regards to the impact of the planning and building director position. Now, do we want to adopt this resolution now or do you want to wait? For presentation.
I was going to ask you that. Procedurely, because these are all tied together, right? If budget it goes with, so I would think we go through them all.
Yeah, you want to make sure folks have an opportunity to public comment. Yeah. Everything, so I guess I was to. Public comment, people comment on anything they've heard and then take the votes.
So we'll take the adoption of the resolutions. Presentations and comments.
I will skip through a couple slides. Moving on to the budget, before we begin, want to give an update on the current year. Right now, as of the end of May, we're currently running at 214,000. Revenues are about 99% of revised budget. And we're anticipated to exceed budget in most categories with the largest gain in the UUT category. We under budgeted that amount. In the previous or the 2425 budget. And licenses and permits are performing below exception expectation. Expenses are at 96% of the budget. They're below budget in most categories. Most savings related to personnel costs due to not. Utilizing retired annuants on a part-time basis or augmenting staff services through consultant use. So as of right now, we're projecting, well, it's 214,000 surplus and we're projecting to be about 200,000. So looking at the differences between what was the preliminary budget, which was presented at the previous council meeting and to the proposed budget based on conversations and discussions. The preliminary budget had the. Starting in January, that has been revised to October. And that increased personnel costs of a little bit over $50,000. There was a 50 or $40,000 increase consultants for town engineer. That was not included in the preliminary budget by me, but that was an oversight on my part. And then in services, there's a reduction of about 11,100. And that is in basically in supplies and equipment services. The finance committee did review the proposed budget on 13th and did recommend. The proposed budget as is. In comparison to the prior year. The budget includes a 473,000 dollar increase. 228,000 is in UUT, 100, almost 125,000 dollars in property tax and 100,000 dollars in user fees based on the results. There's a 688,000 dollar increase in expenses, 303,000 dollars in personnel costs, mostly salaries and benefit. And that is the reason because we're having a full-time town manager 11 months. Full-time town engineer for 12 months, a full-time planning and building director for nine months. 3% COLA and a 7% increase in pensions and medical costs. There's also a 265,000 dollar contract costs, 335,000 tariff. We have a 25,000 dollar increase in town attorney. And we have a 94,000 dollar decrease from Woodside Fire mainly due to the reduction of vegetation management day. 60, which is about 40,000 dollars. And then the Woodside Fire is also going to be picking up the salary. SERP coordinator for two years and that's about a 50,000 dollar savings there. So we're projecting a deficit of 215,000 in the general fund. Moving on to capital improvements, we have nine projects scheduled, 0.3 million total. From the last meeting, there was a discussion on funding for the town courts resurfacing. That project will be funded through Park and Loop funds. And the schoolhouse IT upgrades, that project will be submitted to the PV fund for fundraising to pay for that project. All the other projects are either funded through Capital Projects General Fund or the Transportation Funds 206, 211, 212. Looking at the operating in capital budget across all funds, revenue appropriations will be totaling 11 point. And the expenditures will be 10.78 million. So yes, we're going to be showing a net gain of 1 million. However, in the general fund, it's a 215,000 dollar decrease basically because of we're using reserves to balance the budget. So moving on to the GAN appropriation limit. This year, we're, the factor is 1.065. Based on the population change of the county of 0.07% and the cost of living increases 6.44%. So using those two adjustment factors, the ratios are 1.001 for the population and the cost of living is 1.064. So the combined adjustment factor is 1.065. So the adjusted limit increased from 5.28 million last year to 5.624 million. And then looking at the appropriation subject to the limit. Our proceeds from taxes are 6.65 million. We are excluding Social Security, Medicare and our cafeteria plan for ACA compliance. And also our capital projects are allowable exclusions for the GAN limit. So our appropriations limit is at 5.62 million, but our appropriation subject to the limit is 4.95 million. But we are under the limit by almost 671. And again, this is required to be adopted annually. So that concludes the presentation for the budget, the salary schedule and the GAN appropriation limit.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to council for questions as I said. Rebecca, can you hear us and if so, do you want to?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I did have a question about the. The, the 3% increase to the worker, to the staff. The question was specifically about maintenance worker three. Because in the May 14th town council agenda, the town council approved the change in title terminology from lead maintenance worker to maintenance worker three. And at the time, it was stated that no one currently occupied the lead maintenance worker classification and that there was no budget ramification. But now it would appear that we have, our two workers are now both been promoted to maintenance worker three? Or is that, has that already happened or is that something that's going to occur in the new fiscal year? And I'm just curious about the, the process of how that happens and what their salary increase was and how it's impacted by the additional 3% increase for the fiscal year, for the next fiscal year.
Corey?
Through the mayor, the maintenance worker three classification was approved at council meeting point. There were two maintenance workers currently on staff that have both served. Years and 25 years respectively. The town manager does have authorization to promote internal staff. The two staff members were promoted to thank them for their. Increase their salary. And this was effective in May and it was a approximately 5% increase for each of those staff members.
So I guess my follow-up question is. In terms of process, this is something the interim town manager is able to do and. How does that get impacted? You said they, you cut out a little bit. There was about a 5% salary increase in May. So does that mean that then they are going to get another 3% now with this new salary? Class, those new salary levels?
Yes, they would be eligible for the 3% cost of live increase or the consumer price index. And it did happen in May. The interim town manager does have the. Promote, demote internal staff.
So I guess from my perspective, I think one. When, when our longstanding employees are promoted, I think that's a reason to celebrate. And it's something that really should go out to the community and highlight those two individuals for their work and to thank them for all their efforts. So I would expect that to show up in, you know, one of our newsletters or something like that, just to let the community know. And I also think, given that it does have a significant impact on our budget, that the town council should really be informed of, of the budget impact for future reference.
And Rebecca, we should bring that back for discussion. Do you have other questions at this point?
Yes, can you, can, Tony, can you confirm that? You stated in your, in, in your, I'm sorry, it's five in the morning here and my brain is not moving as quickly as I'd like it to be moving. In your statement, you had put. No new positions are recommended this year, although employee cost increased by about 303,000 due to benefit changes. Filling of vacant positions and salary modifications. So you put in your presentation, you indicated where the 303,000 came from. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay, and then my other question, let me pull it up, hang on. Let's see, so when we. When Corey mentioned that the 55,000 for the new, but for the new employee staff price CPI increase, that has already been incorporated in, I just want to confirm that that's been incorporated into these numbers for. For 2526, including the, the new salary for the, for the, for our two maintenance workers.
Yes, the, the workforce plan was built with what the employee salary is at the end of June plus 3% COLA.
Okay, thank you. And then at some point, you had written an increase in the town manager budget of 114,000, assuming a permanent town manager is in place by August and 70,000 budgeted for polling and communication consultants. And I just wanted to understand whether the 114 included the 70,000? Or was the 70,000 in addition to the 114 for the town manager budget?
114 was a total increase. So it includes.
Okay. Great. All right. I think those are my questions. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mary. Do you have questions?
Yes, I have a couple. I'm wondering about the sales tax going down. 350 to 325. What accounts for that?
Well, currently, sales and use taxes both budget. And the 350 that we had was actually too high. So I've reset it to 3.
Okay, I see.
And that's based on our consultant HDM.
I see. I'm wondering where I can see the income from our very successful restaurants? For example, where do we get, where do we find that in these revenues?
So sales tax information for specific is confidential. And so we can't, I can tell you.
But it is under sales.
I can tell you who the highest generator of sales tax is, but I cannot tell you the specific revenue that he generates.
Oh, okay. And so.
And that's, that's in the revenue taxation code.
No, I believe you. And can you, what, what can you say? Say what you can say.
I can, well, I can say that Rosati's is our top.
Okay, so that, that's where, that's the line.
Right. So if Rosati's has any type of Rosati's can move the needle is what I can say.
Yeah, okay. Good to know. I'm just grateful for this. And you went through a couple of things, other people and under capital expenses. And I think you said that that you said that the Park in Lou Fund was paying for.
Yes, the Town Courts resurf.
And I didn't even know about the Park in Lou Funds. How much is in the Park in Lou?
About 40,000.
Okay. And then there was one you said that was being paid for out of the PV.
That's the Schoolhouse IT.
Okay. And has that been, is that a done deal? I mean, has it been raised? In other words, are we utilizing right now?
Well, it hasn't started yet.
That's what I mean.
But we are in the process of, we haven't touched base with John Golden yet.
Okay. And who's paying for the trail rehabilitation? Anybody?
Trails Rehab is coming out of our general fund capital funds project.
Okay. Is that something that you would like to have fundraising for? Or is it not appropriate?
It's, if that is the wish of council, then it needs to become a town-approved project before it can get.
It is a town-approved project if it's.
Yes, but it wasn't one that we recommended for PV Fund. So I need to have direction to say we would like to have. But I would also have to have a conversation with John already, if he's willing to accept that.
Okay. I think that maybe.
Okay.
Except who's paying for the storm drains?
General Fund.
Okay. Craig?
I just wanted to ask a question about GAN limit.
Yes.
So great that we're under. In future years, and I don't want to go too deep down this rat hole, but in future how does, like, there's an interaction here. Could you just give me a
Sure.
But he's edification?
So yeah, so if we pass a revenue measure and say dollars, we're going to be spending that million dollars. So we could be hiring more staff. We could, putting more money into capital projects, which are exclusions, exclusions from the proceeds of taxes. So there's going to be a balancing act between the new revenue we receive those funds to items that are excluded from the appropriations.
Got it. Okay, so we got basically a 670,000 buffer. And then the rest we have to target.
Right, yeah, perfect. So I mean, it's, it's designed, you need to spend this money.
Right.
So, and it's, it's, there are exclusions from, from the calculation that will help us keep it under.
Yeah.
But yeah, that is something that we'll, we'll need to have to keep track of.
Good. Thank you.
Helen, questions?
I don't have a ton of questions. Except for the trail maintenance, which I don't sign item.
Trails.
Trail maintenance. It's coming out of the general fund is what you just told.
That's in 401.
Oh, there it is.
Fund 401.
Okay. And again, it could come out of the UUT pot, right?
If it's for open space.
And our trail maintenance is.
There are open space trail that are funded by, or maintained through the open space.
Okay.
Fund. The other, I mean, the other general fund is funded through a transfer from the general fund. So yes, their argument can be made. UUT is already funding these trails rehab.
Okay. I would absolutely, you know, like to see some of the UUT money to be spent instead of just sitting not being used instead of, I mean, I hear your argument about the general fund.
We're, we're gonna bring.
I know. But, okay, so but right now we're not using the to make sure my, it's a question.
The open space fund is for the acquisition and preservation of open space. So open space trail maintenance minuscule compared to the actual acquisition of land.
Yes. No, I understand that. But of the trails, the 40, is it 40,000? 8,000? Right? Of that, I like, how many of our trails are considered? Oh, we have 35 miles, I think, of trails. Right? 38, 38 miles. So how many miles do we have? Any of those are considered open space?
Off the top of my head, I don't have that number, but it is on the town's website. The open space. It spells out everything.
Okay, thank you. That's and you did answer my question via email about the GAN limit, which is, thank you.
Okay, some of these are just refresh my memory questions. The 3% versus the 2.7% do you generally round?
Yes.
The licenses and permits were under, do?
I mean, that is based on activity. And the how it flows through the planning and building process.
So part of it could be lower interest, part of it could be then some nags in the process.
Right.
Yeah, okay. You did address the IT. But I, I didn't hear if, who's paying for the town hall IT?
That's coming out of the CIP general fund.
Okay, got it. Okay, those were all mine. So at this point, we'll go to questions from the public, public. I see no hands raised in the schoolhouse at this point. And Dave Cardinal has his hand raised online. Go ahead, Dave.
Great, thanks. Quick comment. Justin and Scott have been doing the job of at least three people since COVID, when Howard agreed to cut the staffing from 3 to 2. And outside of Tony, I can't think of any other employees who have never had anything negative said about them in the 40 years I've lived here. So whatever we need to pay them, I, the last thing I would want to do is, is look at percentages or whatever. They are worth whatever we pay them to get them to stay here. So whatever it takes, I think they're the gold standard of people who help us out. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dave. I'm giving it a minute in case anyone else online wants to read. I'm not seeing anyone, so I'll bring it back for discussion with the council. I'm gonna again go to Rebecca, just courtesy if she's ahead of us by a lot.
I guess just to respond to Dave's comment, it's not so much about the two employees. It's just a question of the timing that I had questions about. And the, the lack of sort of letting the town know to celebrate our longstanding employees. I, that's a kind of an issue that we've had quite a long time with Portolo Valley not informing the community of changes. So that's just one of those that should, you know, for sure, we should be celebrating our employees and making sure that community knows what their, you know, what their accomplishments are. So I'd encourage us to have some little bios about them in the next newsletter. Otherwise, I, you know, I think our budget is extraordinarily well-done. I applaud Tony for all your work on this. I also wanted to thank you for resolving the Ladris technology contract. I, I think maybe Craig was involved in that as well, but I appreciate very much that you're saving us something on my orders of, I don't know, $14,000 this coming year. And then we are canceling the contract for the remaining year. So we'll be saving quite a large amount of money with that. So I appreciate all the effort that went into kind of untangling that contract. I'm fine with, with the GAN limit. You explained that to me privately already. And it seems reasonable to have the CPI percentage that staff is recommending. Otherwise, you know, I appreciate it. I think you've done, everybody in the staff has done a fantastic job of getting our budget pretty much under control. I realize we're going to be in a very small deficit, but we do have a reserve for this. And we do now have a plan to resolve. Well, we'll be coming, coming to the town with a, you know, with a plan for how we will resolve our structural deficit in the future. With, since we're planning to hire the two consulting firms to explore the revenue enhancement options. So I'm, I'm, I'm appreciative of all the work that's gone into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Helen?
So echoing you know, absolutely appreciate and support staff and support the 3% salary increase. That said, right, like, I hope in our community recognize that to continue to staff our community, we will need to increase revenues to retain services and to improve service and capacity. You know, so we are talking about that and I just I'm the community that, you know, to get services, we will need, we'd have a structural deficit and we will need to increase revenues. And I know it's been said, but I'll say it again. So you know, whether it's a tax measure, there's also out of our, a lot of our nonprofits own a lot of our acreage in town and looking at, you know, looking at possibilities of whether they want to do donations well, to help with that, that kind of idea. In terms of the budget, trail maintenance, I absolutely whatever is open space, I was just trying to look it up and I couldn't figure it out. Would come out of the UUT, right? So that, you know, we take down our reserves as little as little as possible. The GAN limit, you know, thank you. We're in good shape. Did I forget anything? Great, thank you.
Okay, Craig?
So thank you. I guess I, one thing I want to comment on, I'd like Rebecca's idea bump in their allocation. So I think that'd be great. I also, just the way it got brought up, it was 3%, 5%. And it sounds like it's 8%, but it's only 3% on 5%. Because they're going to get 3% on their old salary versus, just to be clear, they got an increase of 5%, which is a promotion, which is great, and I think but it's not somehow a magic 8% getting some weird way. So I'm completely comfortable with that. I'm really they've always done great work and I've found them to be extremely responsive. I mean, anytime there's been an on campus, I've sent them a note and they've dealt with it. So those guys have been great. In terms of using open space, I think that we need to run that by the open space. Definitely said that that UUT money and, you know, in the ballot, it says it's there for acquiring property and maintaining, it's not there for maintaining trails. So it, it's going to eventually have to come back to the council. It certainly wouldn't just to unilaterally take it out of that budget. So if we, the council, want to have that discussion, that's great. I would recommend that we ask the Open Space Committee to opine and then we can decide where we want to go. Overall, I just want to say this budget process. The, the fact that there's this little public comment tonight, I think is a testament all the meetings that you've held up to this one, including multiple public meetings, multiple council meetings. So I know it's been a tremendous amount of for you in all these previous meetings, in addition to tonight. I mean, what did you say? You have like seven staff reports on one agenda? So you've really done a great job. I can't thank you enough for bringing some confidence back to the finance town. So that's, you know, as we look to next year and as Helen said, and your leadership in the finance area is going to make that a lot easier. So thank you very much for that. And that's all I have on the budget. I think other than that, you did a great job.
Okay, Mary?
I would just echo what everybody else has said. It's great that there, there are a couple of things up, I think, including it, do you actually have a line item here for the PV Fund? I mean, is that what 201 is?
Well, it would be depending upon they would be received as grants. So yes, they would be, it's in, it's in Fund 201.
Okay, so the 201 means grants?
Yes.
Okay. I, I continue to have a question about how we're deciding that process. That's, that is a decision as to whether to, to ask the community whether they want to raise funds? Or whether the how does that? No.
Processes, we nominate the project, the council approves it.
You nominate the process to us?
Or they can come up through they can work with staff. This was all discussed when we did the donation acceptance policy. That the process is going to be it's going to be blanking on the term. Something in progress. It's going to be in progress, but it's going to be working with the committees, working with staff. And then presenting to council. And once it's approved by council, then it's going to be determined, is this a, did we want PV Fund to assist this or any other nonprofit? I mean, we don't want to just single out.
Yeah, so the trail, the trails committees are.
I know.
And yet there's.
They're bypassing the process.
Which should go.
They should work through staff so that we can come to council. And then council approves it and blesses it. And then we can go to.
Okay, good. Thank you for the clarification. I think the budget, you know, is great. Thank you. I think we've got a number of mechanisms in place that could save her. But I would like to agree with Helen that we have got to do revenue enhancement and we have to give out a consistent message across the community that this is something we are going to ask the community.
Craig, did you have a follow-on? Thought I saw you. Okay. All right. Okay. So I do think picking up on the PV Fund question, we do need to keep in mind the process because I think people are confused. I think if the trails committee is getting ahead, I'm sure they're right process. So I don't know if it can, after this season of budgetary focuses up, I'd ask you to make a suggestion to us, like, how can we create for fresher for the commit, for the commissions, for, you know, anybody asking you, hey, Tony, how can we start raising money here? So that it can be easier, more accessible, because I think it was when we were talking about. So I think we'd all benefit from that, but don't want to distract you from the central here on the finance. If you could just get back with a suggestion for us to carry it forward, you know, maybe through a subcommittee of the council, maybe. I'd appreciate it. Yeah, in, you know, these are, these are tough financial times for the town. And we get a lot of questions. How worried should I be? How, you know, what's going to happen in two years? And I think what I can say to those questions is we feel, I'll speak for us because I think I've heard other people saying, we feel so much better about what we know than we did several years ago. And that gives us a lot of power. So you've been instrumental in that and, and that's not a fun job. It's not, and digging things out from a COVID kind of fog has got to be extra easy. So extra difficult, rather, you've made relatively easy, but I know there's a lot underneath that. And so I do want to truly thank you and the team. It's a team for, for making it possible. You know, and the reason I'm saying this is I heartfully agree with my council members that this is a great budget. It's put together, it's tight. I don't want the public to be misled and to think we don't have a ton more work to do. But let's, let's really appreciate this moment that we know where we are. We, we know the categories of tasks and we've got a plan for following up with the next several. Public really to understand that paying attention over the next rest of the year is going to be critical to them understanding what we're proposing to look at, giving feedback and what we want to look at. And having it be a dialogue back and forth, a lot of small conversations can be really useful at this point. And you've done a great job with a lot of little conversations mounting to the place where we are in a position to, to have visibility and to traces. We have more to do, but that's just for the public. We've all got work to do, but we are really for the high quality effort here. So thank you. I really don't have questions on the budget because I've been listening to other small messages that add up to, you know, frankly, if you hadn't done that, I'd be here for hours. So very much, I don't think there's anything more on this topic. I don't want to assume it, anything else? Okay, so we need motions for at this point. Yeah, and Catherine, should we take them one by one?
I was gonna check with the clerk, what's easier, take them one by one? We have three resolutions.
I think we should.
Okay, let's do that.
I think that seems reasonable that way in case council members want to. So I'll move that we adopt resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Oh, so I'm sorry. So I could have given you a name. So that's the salary of
So we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Huffty?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt resolution five approving financial year 2025-26 operating capital budget.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Huffty?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And last, I need a motion to adopt resolution nine seventy five establishing fiscal year 2025-26 GAN appropriation.
So moved. That's right, I'll second. No, I don't mind. Go ahead. You got it. You take it. I don't, don't ruin my
No arm wrestling here. I say
I, I second absolutely, a hundred percent.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Huffty?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
All right, next we have the reauthorization of the treasurer and the investment program. Who's, Tony, is that your presentation?
Yes, my presentation will be brief. This is an administrative matter. Were required by California Government Code section, same as a legislative body made date for one year period. The authority to manage investment programs, that body's treasurer, and our town municipal code enables the town manager serve. So this item is a resolution authorizing or delegating the town treasurer role to the town manager and also authorizing our investment policy for one more year.
Okay. Well, we haven't discussed this.
Okay.
Yeah, we got to go with questions? Any?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. None. Do you have any questions? Rebecca, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment. See no raised in the schoolhouse. I see no hands raised online. So at this point, anything to discuss? Closing the public comment? Okay. Can I have a motion then to approve resolution?
And we had no discussion. Okay.
Oh, do you want to
I move, well, I did have one thing I thought.
Sure, go for it.
And maybe it has to, I think it's important that if the town manager, the is the treasurer, that he attend the finance committee. Just want to discuss that because without having them as informed as possible from but
I'm just waiting.
Okay, that's all. I just think it's another mechanism, keep communications open between the town and been one of our pitfalls.
Okay, do you want to make a comment?
Yes, our, our, our investment policy does allow the town manager to delegate that responsibility to the
Right. Yeah, I know, I guess I know.
Is there a discussion on that? Or any other point?
I'm, I'm comfortable with having Tony. The, the key thing here is you need a figurehead to be just a legal position. And it makes sense that that's the town manager. But I think in terms of the communication, I'm comfortable between the town liaison and having the finance director there. And the finance director has been getting delegated the investment program anyway. I think we're in pretty good shape, so I'm, I'm not feeling that need.
We are in very good shape. My point was that we haven't been in good, any, any things that we can put into place that we
And I'd only ask that, you know, I'm hoping that a town manager delegates and doesn't basically try to do it all. That's, I think, one thing that we suffer from. So we might differ on this one, on how we want to do it. I mean, we absolutely need to understand our, absolutely, but do we need them at every meeting opining? I, doesn't feel like it to me. So just one
I agree.
Okay, any other comments on that point? Okay, then I call for a motion to resolution for authorizing the town treasurer as the authority for management of the policy.
I so move.
Second.
I think Rebecca gets a second. He was quicker. Veronica, we need a roll call.
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Huffty?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. All right, now we're moving down to a proposal on forming a subcommittee. And I'm just roll really quick. And this would be, the first one is creation of a revenue and and associated work with Brian Godby and Catherine Lu, those are vendors that we, we heard about and ago or two. Mark, do you have an update or?
I do two things. We do have signed contracts with both. And contracts that Catherine, just so everybody's comfortable there. This Catherine right here.
Thank you.
This Catherine, Attorney Catherine. Secondly, we do have a kickoff Zoom meeting tomorrow at 1:30. It's just a kickoff meeting. It's not going to be long, but it's going to and so it's whoever gets appointed tonight, if they're available, we'll zoom them in. Zoom and Catherine Lu is putting together an agenda for that, which I'll get out to whoever is appointed. And that's what it's basically to help guide the process. And the, and looking at some of the key issues and how the council stays involved. Would have to keep the entire council engaged, but to do the heavy lifting. So, and it would hopefully end in December 2026.
I have a question for Catherine, our help. Stay in place.
There is no firm deadline. The idea of an ad hoc one. And so I'd say this certain
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions?
Yeah, is that a Brown Act? Did I miss that?
It's a, it's a subcommittee, so comply with Brown Act noticing.
Any other questions, Mary? No, okay, Craig? Helen? Rebecca?
Could, could Mark just clarify what the contract details were again? I know you discussed it last month, our last council meeting, but I don't remember now that full. I don't know the final details of what was signed in terms of timing and whatnot.
Well, some of the timing would be worked out, but like, we start Lou Edwards, Catherine Lu's firm, July 1. And she and her colleagues will help guide the whole campaign, every to organization, so forth, very detailed. Brian Godby's, what we'll work out with him as a part of kickoff is when do we start the surveying or the polling? He also helps with designing, looking at the messages we want to test. We test both messages that might work in favor and messages that might work against having a a successful ballot measure. So that's, and that's, that's basically the work that'll be done. The contract with Lou Edwards, I believe, was sixty-five hundred a month. And that's not tied to any number of hours. It's what it ever takes. Godby, we go up to the thirty thousand, which twenty-five minute survey or polling, that's the limit of how high it could go. So the two together run about seventy thousand.
And can you discuss? Will you be discussing as part of this subcommittee, one of the options of actually having, forming a community committee? That then would, would actually take charge of a lot of this? And would those, would that community membership at some point then interface with these consultants? If, if that was the route that we found community leaders?
That's what I want. One of the things I really want to talk through, how does that all, what are we allowed to do? I know that the town council cannot dictate what the language is, have to do it on their own. And I would presume they would connect with the consultants, help them on it as well. But that's one of the clarifications that we're clear. I think we have a unique opportunity in Portola Valley to have such a ballot with thirty-six hundred registered voters. You probably can get six hundred to sign, you're well over the three hundred and sixty fired. You have the networks here, you've worked hard for it. So I really want to get that clear. And I also want to be clear about some of the other ballot measures that might be coming. And Catherine really, Catherine Lu really knows these, what other ones are out there percolating that heat for, against us or for us or whatever, before November of 2026? Who else might be doing a tax measure that's around us? Or who else might be coming up with any sort of things that could impact this? So we have a full picture.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I know, I did have some questions. For the seventy thousand, were we clear in the contract about the timeline? Because there was some lack of clarity when it
Yes, the, the Lou contract will go seven and a half months. And then would have to be either renewed, renegotiated, or stopped because we decided not to go forward. The Godby contract is tied, makes the surveying and the polling, the analysis of that, the recommendations of that. Ultimately, what happens, in my experience with both of them, is they help us understand what the polling says. They help us figure out what the margin of error might be. And they will also help make a recommendation to go one of the advantages of the community driven one is that will be a fifty percent plus one, no matter what's out there. And that's a big deal compared to sixty-seven percent.
So can I just be clear then? But Catherine Lu's contract is based January, is that right? And then we'd have to renew a
Have to renew, we'd have to see where we are. Also, this does, yeah, it's just a stopping point. And I think it's a good time to have a stopping point and just see where we are, not be locked in beyond that. And Catherine's very, as I've said before, Catherine Lu's very reliable in my experience of telling us, don't go forward. She doesn't try to squeeze us to go forward if she doesn't think it's going to work.
Right. Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, good question.
So what I'm, I'd like more information on is what is the scope? Can they make decisions? Can they spend money? Can they, you know, can they tell you, go to the fifth route or the sixty-seven? When do you come back to the? So those are the
Sure.
The parameters I'd like to hear more.
In my experience, I would bring it back to the full council. When there's data, like data from the polling for a decision to go forward and not go. So in Windsor and I did this, we're polling at fifty-two percent with the margin of error of four to five percent. So the recommendation from Godby and Lu were, don't go forward. That was a council decision recommended to the what I'm seeing here where the subcommittee can help is it's in designing the polling itself is looking, messaging you, is looking at the organization, is looking at the, do we go the route of the driven one? What does that mean? And then I think we go back to the council critical decision. You know, because this is what it means if we're going to You know, because this is what it means. If we're going to go this route, it means this um for the community and so forth. But a lot of the details are done in the in the subcommittee. It's kind of like we did with other subcommittee work that's been done here and that
Yeah, the reason I'm confused a little bit is because I haven't yet discussed the pros and cons of different revenue measures. And what I'll just be clear, I'm concerned about is I don't think it's appropriate, and I don't think this is your intent for a subcommittee. Oh, we're going to go after column
No, no, no.
I just want to be very clear on that.
Yeah, you have the pros and cons coming July twenty-third.
Right, and so the subcommittee, even though some work is going to get started, you're not going to start formulating queries to poll against until you get the feedback from the, or not ones that need that specific.
You're not finalizing final, whereas you might be talking about um what should be in, what kind of you know, how many questions, how long it ought to be, all those technical things, but the uh it's it's just that getting it's that basic meeting started early is important.
Yeah.
But fortunately, you do have the uh information from the finance committee scheduled for
Okay, okay, so the the two air
You're in sync on that.
Well, coalesce after the, okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Those are good questions.
Um, all right, so I'm looking around at the schoolhouse, uh unless anybody else has anything else in terms of questions, we're going to go to public comment. And I'm not seeing anybody in the schoolhouse with their hands raised and so I'm going to close public comment, come back for discussion. And what we need to know is, is a subcommittee appropriate? And if so, who wants to put their hand up to be on it? And then we go from there, because I I assume two members, not a one-member subcommittee, two members. Okay, state state in the obvious. So um Helen, do you want to go?
I mean, um I've worked in campaigns a lot. Uh I absolutely um valuable to have a subcommittee. Um I am very interested in working on the sub.
Uh Craig?
Um so I have a couple of comments on just the process. So one of them is, I'm hoping that once we have the sub decide when and where to use um the Lou, like you're saying it's seven and a half months, you're making it sound like it starts July seven and a half months, whereas I feel like what we've talked about before was, let's meet with them, and if we don't need to do anything all the summer and the next paid month is in September, then that's fine, rather than somehow we're paying July and August ticking off the clock. So I just want to make sure that we spend the first month figuring out what the timeline look, and we just timeline, or whether it's broken up depending on on when it's appropriate to sort of gather um various pieces of information that meet
That'd be um, that'd be correct. Okay. You'll learn what experience is done in terms of whatever a month-to-month thing, but there could be a break.
Yeah, okay.
Would be part of the subcommittee work, would we sign that?
Right, and then the other is on the scope. Um it's my expectation that the subcommittee would take direction from the council, work with the consultants to sort of refine that and bring it back to the council, you know, I mean, assuming that we're trying to make a decision, you know, we've got eight columns and we narrow it to three, that decision needs to be counseled on. So um I think it's reasonable the council can say, yep, these six or eight, whoever we think are reasonable, now go discuss it with the consultants, come back to us with a proposal on why you think these three are the best three, but ultimately, I would expect that that would be the council's and then the consultants would go forward to do polling.
That would be my thinking.
Okay, great. So that that's the kind of scope. So I think there's a, to the thing to the question you were asking, I I assume give and take. The council giving direction, the subcommittee working it through with the consultants, bringing it back to the council, getting some more direction and rinse and repeat, so to speak. So, okay. And I would be interested in if if it's open.
Okay, um Mary?
Well, uh I second your your concerns and I I think it's a great the subcommittee is really important and I sense a lot of enthusiasm for participating in it. And um I bow to the other people who are expressing their interest.
So you're not volunteering? Okay, that sounds good. All right, Rebecca?
Um I I think the idea of the subcommittee is great. Um I guess I want to echo what Craig said about um decision-making and updates in particular. Uh even though I'd be happy to serve on the subcommittee, I'm I'm, I would also be happy to have Helen and Craig if that's who who it falls out to. Um but I would request to have a lot of updates on this and to have a have to establish at least in July, kind of the the process that you'll be filed, that the community or the subcommittee and the town council would be following in terms of um getting this community, if we if the decision is made by the council to move forward with sort of encouraging a community-driven process to really have a really strong idea of what that process will be of how how you will drum up business with um the community, who's going to you know, how what the outreach will be like to get some um people involved in that. So I would want to be updated frequently and given the Brown Act issues, I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for at least monthly, if not bi- bimonthly with each town council meeting, that we get a little update on what the subcommittee is doing.
All right, um I think it's a good idea. We need to and make sure that we're we're continually in a dialogue, that the subcommittee will learn a lot and be efficient in that process. My only concerns are along the lines of touch bases. I don't want it to be that there's a lot of effort put in special uh presentation every meeting. I think a verbal update, um even if it's, we're continuing a tune would satisfy me, but for any material really good and need more background. Where I have more sensitivity around it is decisions like engaging the public. I'm not quite sure what that public, I haven't been sessions and frankly, I'd want to understand what that is. I think deciding to form a community panel is something that I would like to hear about before understand the scope of it. Um so that's where I would um I I'd want uh I want to take advantage of the energy that volunteers have uh who've stepped forward uh have and just ask them to what they're going to be learning, we won't understand. So they've also got to do you together with um others are going to have to do some um of us and then enter the public and these things. So I I'm a yes, and if um others are comfortable with Helen and Craig.
And I just wanted to add, I think there's multiple community groups here. I mean, we might have one of our options to have a community ballot. And and that's something that's sort of independent of us, but there's also just in this process, part of Lou's is engaging thought leaders in the community for whatever the the town decides to put on the badge. So I just want to make sure because Mark is sort of talking about one of it, and and it is a much broader, I think, engagement.
So there's a couple of ways it could work and that even, you know, that helps, but I would want to understand um how that works because I do think how those uh town-wide committees who were the I think the full full council needs to weigh in.
Agreed. Yeah, yeah, no, I wasn't taking anything away from, I was just trying to make sure it was clear. There's there's kind of two community things out there, not just one, and I think we need to do, actually do for both.
Yes.
Yeah, this is more what I see. Yeah.
Okay.
And I
Is that sounding right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's uh just something to keep in mind that we're shook behind that you're that you're going to let the then lead this.
We, I I didn't hear that.
I I think we're going to talk with the consultants and find, I mean, there's one of the options is to let the community
Exactly.
That to be the lead from behind. The other is, we put something on the ballot, like if we decide to go revenue enhancement by the, to the charter town, right, that's something we would put on. Um and then we'd want to get community leaders and thought leaders in town to help rally behind that cause.
Yeah.
So I can imagine it in different ways.
In different ways, that's exactly.
Along what with what councilmember Vice Mayor, excuse me, uh Taylor said, um I would also, before we decide we I, we would want the community feedback, right? That and that's partly partly the surveys, but it's also those, I call them the grass tops, not the grassroots, the thought leaders. Right, to make sure that we are going in the right direction and not do what's
Well, so my concern, to be blunt, is who defines thought leader? And so that's something, that's why I'm asking ultimate on what that looks like, how that process is going to work, because it's so important that we not we not just make assumptions that we have a full session from my perspective. Does that sync up with how you're thinking about it?
Right, I mean, I call them the grass tops because they're the people who are our chairs, are on our committees, are calling in, who are watching this meeting right now, right? That's, those are to me, I mean, obviously there are people, things that are not involved or busy and doing other things who are also lead right, like I know like Sangini, for instance, in town, you know, Dana's not on our committee right now, those people, right? She's, oh, she's, no, she's still on ASCC, sorry, I'm losing track. So but like Sangini is a huge leader with full community. Right, so making sure that we get the parents, making sure we get those thought leader from the different segments of our of our town.
Yeah, I I mean, part of the issue, say it is, you've got to reach people who need vote to get to fifty seven, and my main point, you're going to be more likely to get that if you council members and figure out a process and um you can propose it, but I do think you're going to be most successful if you let all of us use all of our
Absolutely. So, right, but there's also going to be you know, yard signs are not voters, and so usually you want to do phone banking.
Uh who is?
Yard signs are not voters, right?
Yeah.
The actual people who show up are the voter, so you need to, you know, you need to reach the actual voter.
It, I'm in a fully agree agreement, and all I'm saying is we're here to help because we are five that were elected, you know, successfully, so we should use all of our network. Anyway, um I think if you yeah, if you, well
No, no, that's good. No, 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 good. I
I mean, I'm not trying to micromanage here. This is important to have anything that's just a
I
Okay.
Yard sign, but I was, that was what felt like we were too far. It wasn't you.
I didn't raise
I know you didn't. I had, that's what I was saying.
That's not my concern.
No, no, your your concern is is let's use all and let's make sure that the full council is on
Yeah.
Yes, and I'm totally, yes, I support that.
You on a phone bank and letting you call your network. Oh, that's fine, perfect, fine.
Yep, never.
Um I'm knocking on doors, I'm I'm there when you need me.
Yep.
All right, um, okay, so we can move on to the next. I assume there's no motion, is there or?
Yes, we would need to
Okay, roll call, a vote to appoint to the subcommittee. Helen and Craig, and that's the town subcommittee for work on revenue enhancement. No motion?
I so move.
I second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Huffdie?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Husco?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. All right, uh the next item is appoint identify alternate sides of town propose lower barn project and that's, um this arises, thank you, Corey, take care. Um this arises as just in the background memo uh due to a a disclosed conflict. We never knew when we would have a need for alternate counsel, but I'll let Mark Catherine give the overview.
Sure, I'll give the overview, ask questions, and that as indicated when we brought Catherine and her firm on that they disclosed that they were also representing um Mid Peninsula Posts and a number of others. That's one of their areas of expertise that we joy. Um we're getting to the point in Hawthorns where we're going to be doing work together. We may our committee working on things we mute on some you know, one that's already come to mind is uh there are some of the council members who want to work on the entire Hawthorns area. And I know that Ned Pen is interested in having us work on the historic area. So you know, there's going to be things where we can use independent counsel and on having a subcommittee, and I think this could be a subcommittee of always two, you can sometimes have one, and this can be one or two, and just to um Catherine and I've already started working on possible attorneys that could work with us on this matter and have the expertise. And it's not anything against uh either Catherine's firm or against Mid Peninsula, it's just some points need independent advice. And not have any of the community feeling either. So it's it's really a lot of it, a lot of things we have to do here is messaging to our community that we're being thoughtful about the unintended consequences and so on, and it's part of building uh trust and reliability back for you. So that's what this is, I think, all lays it out, but Catherine and I are here to answer your questions about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions, Mary? No. Craig? Rebecca, are you there?
Yeah.
You okay?
Yes, I I did have a question. Um how specialized is the uh attorney for this area? For the the Hawthorne, the Lee, you know, mid-tenants, open space type of attorney, is that more of a can a generalist municipal attorney handle that, or does it need an actual very specialized land, um open space type attorney or land use? Because this is more land use than
Yeah, I I would recommend a um I will say, you know, I serve as a city attorney and a town attorney and as part of my practice, I get a lot of land use and and so finding someone who either um solely does land use in zone or someone somewhat more general background, uh but with a strong land use uh practice would would likely be um a good fit.
So
Oh, go ahead.
No, no, finish your thought.
Well, I was just going to say, and I think that's one of the best you know, the council subcommittee uh working with staff um on, you know, selecting the best candidates, and I have provided several rules um from my network uh to staff uh uh to to get folks started.
I guess my other question was, does it make any sense to um have a have a backup lawyer if other situations arise? To kind of use this subcommittee to evaluate other other law firms just to have a backup because in others, there's other situations where you've had to recuse yourself and I, you know, I don't want a scrambling again, you know, I don't know if we do scramble, but I did, you know, looking at the warrants, we have used other law firms for for when your firm is or when you're you're required to um recuse yourself. So I'm just wondering if this subcommittee is not also an opportunity for us to just also have some other firms in our in our backup kind of for other situations that arise?
I think you could do that. I think pool of people um communicated with could could be useful.
All right. Do you have any questions? Um Helen?
Some are, um because these are historic buildings? These are historic buildings, so I'm um quite curious about the Lee expertise around historic. Is that, because that's quite
That's good to know. They are the
Area.
Focus we're doing initially is work built.
Right, and that's, that's a, I mean, yes, land use, but work is all
Okay.
Quite a different.
Okay.
Legal.
We'll work hard not to find somebody who's against historic. No, I think it's a good point. Um, I think that's another lens to look at. Appreciate that.
I do have
No, you can go.
Uh, I've been struggling with this a little bit because obviously both of vest, uh, land use attorneys and conservation easement attorney, et cetera. Uh, and what we need more is a mediator than, uh, the expertise, because we already have
This is question, not discussion. So if you're getting to a question.
Okay, I'm asking about mediator. Person who's good at media, uh, would be helpful for us.
I think
I'm a big, I'm a big fan of
It's, it's, uh, another lens to look at. Appreciate the comment as we get the independent counsel that we, or we can concede. That's what I'm, why we're asking all of this.
Yeah.
So kind of how we screen these potential independent counsel. That's good. Thank you.
Right. Um, I'm, I have no questions. Uh, I do want to take public comment. Uh, the first, there's no one in the schoolhouse with their hand up, Rita?
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. Um, my, my question is really about the budget. Is this something that we have to do now? Is it something that Catherine would have, um, you know, attorney Catherine would have just normally have done? And it would have just been a, a line item in a warrant list? Or is this something that is a, a new budget item that we need to focus on right now? And that is the reason why we need to spend time, you know, uh, the time of the, of the people on the council and more money for another attorney to address this particular issue right now? Is it, is it something that is pressing? Thank you.
Okay. Um, Dave Cardinal, you're next.
It's, um, reading what makes it more pressing is that at the next council meeting, we'll, uh, looking at who will serve as the town representatives on ad hoc committee with the three representatives in Peninsula. So the, the business, the work is starting. It's not going to be including, um, it's not going to need another line item of legal service. And in some cases, um, in fact, all our cases, a lot of it will be built against, um, Mid Peninsula because they are the applicant in this case too. So it's, it's going to be very, but it's not, um, it's not going to need to be another line item or in addition to the budget.
Okay. Um, Dave Cardinal, you're next. Dave?
Questions? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, two related questions. One is, how much are we willing to spend? And number two is why, which I don't think we spent any time on. Um, I, as much as Mark, I love Mark. Uh, Mid Penn has an infinite budget for lawyers. As anyone who's followed the hundreds of hours of conversations they've had, which they've now narrowed down in this case to like one barn, which we can approve a CUP for that they don't want to pay for. So great, that's nice. I don't think that's going to be free for us to negotiate with. More importantly, why? Honestly, I don't, uh, why spend our town time on that? If it, it doesn't, it's not about the overall Hawthorns. It's about negotiating over a driveway and this and that for a small number of people. And we're totally cash constrained. So if, if Mark can guarantee that all the money and staff and legal time we spend is paid for by Mid Penn, I guess I'm okay with it. Otherwise, I'd like to have a discussion of why are we even bothering to engage? We don't have to, I don't think. So that's, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kristy?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think I agree with the last comment is how did this become a priority? And based on what the town council priorities are right now, is this where we want to spend our time? And I am up for, um, a different law firm rather than the same. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, no other hands are up. Uh, let's back for discussion. Um, I'm going to ask Craig to start us off.
So I'm comfortable with this. I agree with the members of the public. I'd like to see us put some parameters around this. Um, so if this is Mid Penn coming back to us and it's part of their application and they're paying for it, I think that's reasonable. Otherwise, I think we have to figure out what our budget is and um, so that, that, that I think is a, is a, is sort of a reason. Um, and for this particular line item, which is, we need to get our subcommittee to pick somebody. Um, Judith, I think you've done a wonderful job. You're an attorney. You know what? So I'd be very comfortable.
Okay, Mary?
Well, that's a, it was a very interesting, uh, series of comments. My discomfort a little bit with this is that, uh, I was hoping this was going to be just more a board versus coun, with council uh, discussion of, of where we are and where we want to go with bases in it. And, uh, I'm afraid getting a lawyer involved in it in some ways is going to interfere with our, being able to just brainstorm as, as two, as two boards. But I could be totally wrong about that. And, uh, I just wanted to put that out there that I, that's part of my thinking about this, to have a lawyer uh, is part of the process.
Okay. Do you have any pro or con on forming a subcommittee to appoint?
Well, we might as well have a back. Don't have to employ them. So I think, yes, we need a backup lawyer and I'm all for it. Happy to serve, in fact, if didn't want to do it.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, but I, I think the, the amount we would use them would be pretty minimal in my, in my estimation.
Um, Rebecca?
Um, I think the idea of a subcommittee to find a backup lawyer is, is very important. The town does need, need to be protected. And if our current attorney, um, has a conflict of interest, then obviously we do need a different one. Um, so I'm fine with, uh, establishing that. I think Judith, you're the lawyer on the, on the council and you're probably the best placed person to be able to evaluate the law, the different law firms. So I would certainly be very happy if you were to serve on that committee. Um, that's about it. That's all my comments.
Thanks, Helen.
Um, yeah, I, you know, I definitely think we need our own legal representation. I love Shoot Mahali. I work with you guys all the time. Um, Mid Penn has a much bigger budget than, than we do. And so I, you know, conflicted out. Um, so, uh, respectfully to our, you know, Mid Penn, um, I don't want us to be exploit. Um, so I appreciate Councilman Taylor, like, really put a limit on this. Um, so because, and also some land use attorneys are like seven and eight dollars an hour. Um, so I would appreciate, you know, folks from the legal profession. I support and your experience with the other board, um, being on the sub, the two of you. So Mayor, and I'll say it out loud, um, the mayor and, uh, council member, Mary Huffty. So, yeah.
Yeah, and this was, from my perspective, intended to put us in a situation where we could respond quickly. Um, because sometimes it can take a while to find someone with the right background. Alignment. So this is to me about being prepared, and I think we have to do that. Um, we don't know where these conversations are going to go, Mary. So I, I'm not a deep dive. Um, but nevertheless, we got to protect the town.
Yep.
So we'll be looking to seek the appointment of somebody we think is, you know, prepared, experienced, reasonable rate, all, all of that. Um, we won't be appointed or, or, um, have the authority to discuss the param, like the budget for them or anything like that. This is just who and before they were engaged, I think we would a discussion, other than like a minor question or two bigger questions, I think we do want to come back and have a discussion about, um, you know, what parameters you're comfortable with, given what we learned that ad hoc committee might, might need from the town. I do agree on, they, they are going to be well advised on their end. So we, we have to make sure that we're comfortable, we're, we're in the right place. So to me, I'd be happy to serve on the subcommittee. Get going and report back.
Right.
All right, anything else?
Could it, could I, oh, you're about to make a motion?
I was just going to make the motion.
Okay, I, I just had one thing to say, uh, in, in terms of completing the discussion, uh, which is that a more than a third of our property open space, not which is something that I've become quite aware of. And I think it, it crosses all of our pri uh, as a, as a town council to have a good relation with M R S D and post, an open and robust, uh, relationship as a pri, as a ma, as our major property owner in town.
This is um, because it's because you brought this up again, um, if I can
Well, let's see if it's, if it's something we can talk about. I'm not sure.
Ask, um, Mark and Tony to send out to his council, please, the articles that I sent about what the city of Boston did with their nonprofits and the financials.
Okay.
Great.
All good. All right. So, uh, need a motion with a roll call vote?
Yep. So I move that we appoint town council subcommittee to identify alternately counsel to advise the town regarding base district, lower barn project and Hawthorne complex property.
Uh, can I modify that?
Uh,
Friendly, uh,
You can try.
Try? Just how about the Hawthorne?
Uh, I'm reading what's on here and Hawthorne District. So I'm just basically, it's item D.
I
Subcommittee. I, I don't think we need to worry about the grammar, do we?
I, I don't think there's any ambiguity about what we need.
Yeah.
So is it offensive to about the, the? I mean, honestly, we just
I mean, literally, I just read and it's that line right there.
This proposed lower barn project. We really, uh, hiring this just for that?
This is what we're giving this person right now. If we, if we like them, we can come back and appoint them to some, but this is what they're, this is, it's focused not on the entire property. It's
It's not all things Hawthorne.
Right.
Just
Are you okay if I second this?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, roll call, vote.
Councilmember Flynn?
Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Huffty?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hasko?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. All right, uh, we're moving on to and, um, reports. And there's a couple attached to the packets. Um, we can take public comments on those. Also, we updates first so that people can comment on everything. Are there any verbal updates that people want to offer?
I have verbal.
Yeah, sure.
So, um, uh, I did attend two meetings, uh, for Rebecca, the library GPA budget, and they did it lickety-split. They were out within thirty-five minutes. Um, the conservation committee was not, it, uh, it went, um, quite late. Um, but there is, I did want to mention, there is some sort of conflict between the conservation committee, ASCC vestige proposal. I, they said that they did get it, um, uh, there are quite a few tree roadway being small. Um, and I think the ASCC was quite concerned about that. So my understanding is it did get resolved, but, um, but, um, but I wanted to flag that for everyone.
Yeah.
Great. That's my report out.
I have the flip side of that because I was at the ASC. So the conservation was heated. And, uh, and they position of generally wanting to save trees, so they found themselves very uncomfortable. The ASCC really doesn't have a jurisdiction the right of way and over the, um, the non-significant tree. So it was just resolved more than, the ASCC was discontent.
So, so
I wrote my, I might write my next time.
All right, well, we don't want to discuss it. I would just look, or I'll look, I'll look at the minutes when we get there. Okay. All right, uh, any other liaison reports, verbal? Yeah, okay. Pardon? Oh, I, we have to take
Oh, you're right.
Yeah. So I'm going to open it up to public comment at the, nobody in the schoolhouse and that's her hand up. So go ahead, Rita.
Hi, I just want to say that, uh, the finance meeting last week was, uh, was, uh, very enlightening. And, uh, all the members were engaged and there were, there was a lot of discussion. I'm sorry to not see a report from anyone there. Um, but I, I guess our, the liaison wasn't at the meeting. But if somehow there can be a report for the next meeting, uh, about that finance meeting, that would be, that would be really helpful for the community.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Do we have to do a roll call on that? Seriously?
No, you can do all in favor.
All right. All in favor.
All in favor, I
Aye.
Thanks, Rebecca. Get some rest.
Hi, nice to see you, Rebecca.
Bye.